I'd like to call this meeting to order. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Here.
De Penya.
Here.
Graziano.
Here.
Notari.
Here.
Robel.
Here.
Councilwoman Strumal Burke will not be attending this evening. Mayor Melon.
Here. Let's try.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting was published in the December 18th issue of the Star Ledger and in the December 20th issue of the Belleville Times. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Belleville Town Hall bulletin board and a copy is filed with municipal clerks.
Ludges.
I pledge allegiance to my flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the common good, liberty, and justice for all.
Another roach. Do we need a roach? I am at the point of entertaining a motion to go into an executive session to discuss salary ordinance contract negotiations. We have a motion made in second. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cosarelli. De Penya.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mayor Melon.
Yes. At this point, unfortunately, we do need to clear the room. Executive session, please. We have a motion made in second. All are favored. We are back in the regular meeting. I'm just going to give it a second for everybody to file their receipts. It appears that we're all back. So we had originally gavelled the meeting to order, then we had to go to an executive session. We have now exited executive session and we're going to continue with our meeting at item number five on the agenda of approval of amendments.
Regular meeting is May 28th.
Make a motion to.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to approve the amendments. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cosarelli. De Penya.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mayor Melon.
Yes. For the manager, just speed up because you're not late. Or take Tommy's place.
Good evening, everyone. First thing I like to do is, and we take this for granted, so whether it's our great municipal clerk, our police chief, our fire chief, and our DPW supervisor, we take it for granted that they come just about every council meeting. It's obviously very helpful to have them in here. So all the night staff, we didn't thank you. Thank you for making all those meetings, and we do appreciate that. But I also would like to extend a big thank you to the back section of the room. We have our court director, we have our tax collector, we have our health director, and we have our court enforcement director. Again, they all came here strictly on a voluntary basis, but I think what we were discussing in some of our department heads is having our department heads at council meetings is a great advantage for certainly the mayor and council, who may not be able to get in during the week, during the course of the normal days, because we know your schedule is busy. So you have access to their resources, and certainly to the residents that attend the meetings tonight. You all have the opportunity certainly to ask questions, and Mary gets like an extra star because as the tax collector, she actually came to the meeting after the last tax quarter bill went out. So Mary clearly is a great woman.
We got questions.
So if there was, we thank you for coming, even though you were the tax collector that sent the bill out. Actually, Mr. Esposito did want me to, he wanted to come tonight, Mr. Esposito wanted to come tonight, and he was dealing with a family issue, but he did want me to just make a general statement that his office has been getting a lot of calls, and it's a very common mistake. People take your third quarter tax bill, you times it by four, and that's the last thing you should do because that's not the right number. So for, and he says the majority of the calls that have been coming into the tax assessor's office and the tax collector's office is that common mistake to get your third quarter estimated tax bill, and then they times that by four and they think that's their real number, which that's not the case. And as far as the 2019 budget concerned, our town auditor and Maro Tucci and I myself have continued to work on it. We've been in constant dialogue with the Department of Community Affairs, and we're very hopeful that we can finalize and adopt our budget in the very near future. So again, a big thank you. Police and the fire department continue to do an excellent job here in Belleville. First, today was day two of the Junior Police Academy. We have over 50 students in Belleville enrolled. There's a physical fitness component, educational component, component, sorry, and graduation is this Friday, so anybody's in the area, Friday at 1:30, we'll have a graduating class of the Junior Police Academy on June 18th. Our police department was involved in a major drug takedown. This originated in Newark, but the Attorney General's Office and the ATF and DEA asked the Belleville Police Department to assist. It was a successful operation, over 27 people were arrested, and just by our participation, we actually have the opportunity to get a share of the forfeiture funds and things of that nature. So more good news coming on from that end. Our fire department and the town, especially in the, what street was it? It's on my notes, if I could just maybe put my glasses on. Last Sunday, we had an electrical pole with three generators toppled somewhere around 6 o'clock in the morning. Thank God it was at 6 o'clock in the morning because hazmat had to return. If it was during the day, there's a church in session and also a school, that could have been a lot worse. But again, between hazmat, PPP, and our fire department, that was quickly jumped on, and again, great job by our police department and our fire department. I already spoke about our third quarter taxes. Councilwoman Burke was not able to attend tonight's meeting, but we have been working very close, Councilman Burke and I, on the Just a Party, and more information will be made available, but we have.
September 12th.
I'm sorry, the mayor was at that meeting too, but we're not working as close. But Councilwoman Burke did want me to tell everybody that Just a Party is scheduled on the calendar for September 12th. The shit's going to be bigger and better. But again, for the department heads that are here, I truly appreciate it, and I know the council does as well.
Next up, for the mayor, just two quick summaries from our last meeting. Our Historical Society received an award from our county freeholder, Primaris, along with several of the historical societies throughout the county for their dedication and work to all things historic. That was a great honor, and I was glad, I think Mr. Perom's been for that. So that was nice to see. And I've been, update also from previous meetings, and I don't see or hear, but I have been to Quinton Street twice since the last meeting, one time with Mr. Iacono. We've been looking around there, talking to different people there. We've even had some informal conversations with Soler Domenio, and I believe that we have maybe a resolution that might be something that those residents are going to be happy about, more to come on that, I guess, in the future. Current stuff going on, again, Mr. Iacono's been here about three or four weeks now. Commend him. I know we had a department head meeting a week or so ago, and that went really well, and you see some improvement of that. I was going to thank the department heads too that are here in the room tonight for being here. He already did that. It's nice because we get questions a lot up here, and I can't answer everything. It's nice to have some of the department heads here that we can always just refer to. That said, Mr. Iacono also mentioned tax bills went out. This year, for the first time, we included a letter which hopefully explained or made some of the property owners understand a little more as to what that bill is comprised of and maybe how it got there. The back part of that bill also included a flyer with some important notices, illegal apartments, noise, and I believe dog, dog waste control. So that was something that I've heard, talked about from various people here, and I believe that was the first time that was included in there. I did have a meeting yesterday morning with the county, county executive. We discussed pretty far ranging topics, one of which is Rucker Street. Rucker Street is on the list to get paved, building paved this year by the county. Unfortunately, they were stopping at the intersection by the bridge, which is the most awful intersection you ever seen. And this is why we do this stuff. I had breakfast with the county executive. I told him that we've had cars, flat tires, we've had someone nearly killed there. He's well aware that I've been fighting with the state, the county's been fighting with the state to get that intersection fixed. Right then and there at the meeting, the county executive picked up his phone, called the county administrator, and told him that they are not going to stop at that intersection. They're going to go right through that intersection and fix it, and then submit the bill to the state, actually. So that was a huge development that came out yesterday. Also, we discussed open space. He gave me a number, told me I can't quote it yet, but we have a six-figure number coming out of the county next year as our open space allotment, which will be very good for us. We can utilize that for some of our current open spaces or to acquire new open space. So that's that. 2017 oral reports done. Reminders, there's only one meeting in July, one meeting in August. The bid for our new senior bus, I've been touting our new senior bus since I wrote it last year with Councilwoman De Penya. We did deliver that bus to our seniors, meaning that we put it in the budget, it's been bonded. We are accepting, I think, bids this evening. We shall be on that bus shortly. Very anxious for that bus to get here. You'll notice tonight, I believe, there's one ordinance on that we're discussing salary ordinances. When you see salary ordinances, we have to vote on that range. That range that you're seeing for that particular position is a reduction. So a lot of times, everybody complains the salary's going up, they're wanting more money. We're reducing the salary for that, for that particular position. Upcoming things, summer movie nights this coming Wednesday, Spider-Man Into the Spider Universe, Wednesday night at the Municipal Stadium Complex. Fourth of July is going to be just as good as it was last year. It's going to have a ceremony at the Dutch Reform Church at 11 o'clock. After that, 6 to 8 at the stadium. Our recreation department handles that. 9:15, 9:20 are fireworks. Same program as last year, we expect it to be just as good as last year. Lastly, Just a Party, as the manager mentioned, set for September 12th. That's really it for my report. We have communications.
Sam, I'm sorry, excuse me one second, just a point of clarification. The reorganization meeting that normally takes place on July 1st is actually tonight.
Yeah, I had two quick things. First is I got a letter from Mr. Barry Jerry's wife at 24 Emmett Street. They're looking for a sign for their autistic child, like autistic child with a plaque, which I'm going to give to the head there. But it's to all of us for fear. The other thing is, one of my neighbors was, her husband and her were having a little bit of a disagreement. She refused to go to the hospital, refused the ambulance, and I want to say dial-a-ride picked her up and took her, and thank God they did, because she's very sick. But you know, some people just don't want to use the ambulance. I mean, I don't know why, but there's an opportunity for us to thank you, Colin, and please let them know that my neighbor came up specifically to see me and said, hey, we use dial-a-rides, great.
Yes, I wanted to take the opportunity to thank Chief Manikini, apologizing, losing my voice. If you've seen around town, the stigma-free signs, we passed the ordinance in October, and that's only the first step in the whole initiative. And the goal is to develop a culture of acceptance for people who have mental illnesses and also substance abuse, and understanding that this is, you know, it's just a sign for many people, but for other people, this is just, it's a statement. And we are in the process of establishing stigma-free task force, so there is a process that comes with having support from the schools, having supports from medical professionals, also our police enforcement, and we're just really, really, I'm looking forward to this. It's a cause very dear to my heart, and I think that having these signs around town starts making that first statement, that we are that type of community, that we're inclusive, and that we are, that everyone is a human being no matter what, and they will be respected. So thank you so much for putting that together, and thank your team for me, please.
Couple of things. We had a meeting last Tuesday in the manager's office. Our attorney was there, our chief of police, our deputy chief, regarding what I talked about two weeks ago, the noise level in this town. And I really do have to commend Chief Manikini and the police department. They are out there, they are canvassing neighborhoods that are being inundated with this noise. And one of the questions that I did have, and this is important to know, I did ask during the day, the way the state law reads, the sound level is at 65 decibels. So I said, I don't know what 65, I don't really know what the sound of 65 decibels is. And I was told that the conversation that we were having at that meeting, and we were about eight people at that meeting, I was told that the conversation we were having was higher than 65 decibels, and it was a very low-key conversation. So one of the, one of the plans that the police department has come up with, they are out there, they encourage you to call. Again, if they are not, if the people are not in compliance with the decimal levels, they will be summoned. And I did, and a lot of people are complaining about this. This is a problem throughout Belleville. I spoke the other day to a doctor in a memory care unit, and I said to him, what would happen if a dementia patient, and one out of three families have dementia today, fortunately. I said, what would happen if a dementia patient lived near this type of sound? And he said to me, it would cause complete, not only disruption, psychotic behavior. He said the dementia patient would not be able to sit, would be running around, literally throwing themselves off walls. So we need to be in compliance with this. The manager said at our meeting, I believe it was the middle of June, that the police department within a week span received 150 calls townwide with this, with this problem. I did see, we are revising the, we are revising the noise ordinance. It'll be on for introduction, I think, in two weeks. And I did see on the news, and I spoke to our attorney tonight, and he's going to look into it, I saw on the news back Thursday night that Seaside Heights, the mayor of Seaside Heights was on, and they've had it in Seaside Heights with all the noise and the commotion. They're actually calling their ordinance, they're calling it the Animal House Ordinance based on the movie Animal House, because of the world partying that went on in the movies of Animal House. And it's basically three strikes and you're out. The first time the people go to the house, the second time you will get summoned, and the third time you appear without a judge. So Mr. Martino is looking into that. So that's where we are, but it's a very serious problem that is going throughout this town, and there's no quality of life with this going on. Also, Mr. Iacono, I know that you did reach out to James Miles on the drama program. I think you corrected two messages, I don't know.
He's away, but he knows we have a meeting scheduled for next week.
Let me know if you're off next week.
I sent you an email, so you may have not missed that.
That one, probably missed, thank you.
Anybody else? No? Communications?
A letter of resignation received from Morton Sanabria, Walter Number One, member of the planning board of the township of Belleville. B letter received from Rose Tebeto, a planning board attorney stating, the planning board of the township of Belleville recommends that property located at 675-690 Main Street be declared in area and need of rehabilitation.
Ordinances?
Ordinance number one for introduction, and ordinance to amend the revised general ordinances in the township of Belleville, Chapter 8, Dash 2C, residential parking from the area.
Make a motion introduce. Second. Motion made in second. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
De Penya.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mayor Melon.
Yes.
Ordinance number two for introduction, and ordinance amending Chapter 23 zoning ordinance to the township of Belleville, the county of Essex, New Jersey.
Make a motion introduce. Motion made in second. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
De Penya.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mayor Melon.
Yes.
Ordinance number three for introduction, and ordinance to amend that ordinance creating permanent positions and adopting declassification and compensation plans.
Make a motion introduce. Second. Motion made in second. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
De Penya.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mayor Melon.
Yes.
Orders on them? Let's ask you.
Leave it there, it's going to last time, it's going to go.
Motion for public? Motion for public. Second. We have a motion made to open for public comment. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Say it.
De Penya. Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Robels.
Yes.
Mayor Melon.
Yes.
Anton?
Good evening. Now, the last meeting, I, regards to this Walter Kitty site, I asked you to table Resolution 13 because there were some problems with it, but you voted for it anyway. So now I want to know, you know, up the street here, next block years ago, used to be Madame Stanley, the fortune teller. So I don't know if you folks are clairvoyant, because on June 11th, your last meeting, you voted for a resolution that says that the planning board held a hearing and declared a need of redevelopment, and the township manager did all this, made this presentation to it on June 13th. So the question, how did you guys know two days in advance what the planning board was going to do?
Is that the totality of your comments that I'm trying to?
No.
Well, you know how this works, I suppose.
Councilman Graziano was at the planning board, and I asked that question.
You make your comments, and then we'll answer, but we can answer your question.
Well, it shouldn't be an area need to be redeveloped.
It's not.
I mean, rehabilitation, and the town claiming there was, because it was vacant for an extended period of time, vacancy, abandoned, and all, contamination, it wasn't abandoned. The owner was cleaning up the contamination, and then it says, well, the water and sewer lines are 50 years old. Our whole town, most of it's over 100 years old. These are not reasons.
Our whole town was qualified, and area need of rehabilitation, by that sense.
Well, this isn't because they got an application before to get a nice project there. So you know, why are you people interfering? They declared that an area of anything is beyond. And I hope you'll stay out of it and stop interfering with that resolution. I don't know what your agenda is. If you're a guess, I know, Mayor, you love housing. If you're trying to get housing down there, this is a great project. We've been in it for years, we're saying, from four miles from the airport, New York, excellent distribution and warehousing place. And the demand is here, you see all the business, in fact, our former town manager, look what they did, nothing on Main Street, all the, you know, industrial over there. So I hope that goes. The other thing is, in the letter you sent out with the tax bills, you're blaming the Board of Education every year, the referendum. That cost for that referendum was included in last year's base tax bill. So it's not an extra, it's already part of that tax bill. Any increases for other reasons this year, salaries and all, you blame it all on the referendum. That is not the reason for this year's tax increases. We already got that built into our budget from last year, so you're totally wrong on that. And two more things here. Number one, I see Mr. Iacono's salary is listed at $149,999.98. I'd like to donate two cents to make the salary an even $150,000. Give it to you right after the town, the meeting is over, right? I don't know why we got that weird amount in there, related to technology, all the extra digits, just tie up the computer. So being I gave you the raise, Mr. Iacono. A $5.59 million bond was passed a few months ago. Item I on that is $120,000 for building improvements and renovations and all. You come to find out, there's a, you've seen the birds in town, there's one in particular that usually ends on my shoulder, and I was told that 120 is to, maybe that the truth is, what the bird told me, is to expand the mayor's office and make a nice palatial estate. You're the town manager, you run the town.
Palace, I think that would be a palace, $120,000.
So I hope that's not a, and also as town manager, our municipal code said you supervise all departments, that's your job to do. We have someone listed as a count clerk who's seen all over town, taken pictures of mayors at every and any affair that goes through, I believe he's going to use in his campaign, political campaigns. I hope you'll look into that, and this account clerk should be in the town hall doing account work, or this count clerk should be doing, not taking pictures of the mayor all over town at taxpayers' expense.
Do you need to wrap up, Mr. Grant?
Well, that's it. So can I ask you, why are you interfering with the Kitty Project? Can I get an answer on that?
I disagree with your definition of, your statement of interfering, but as far as the process is concerned.
I believe, and I don't have it in front of me because it was on last meeting, I believe the resolution you're quoting for is the resolution that was recommended for the review of the planning board. If you read the entire resolution, the resolution that went to that, that was signed last time just was merely the recommendation of what the, asking the planning board to review it and determine whether or not it's in the area.
I read it, I have a copy, you had it in last year's meeting. I read it. I don't know if you read it, because it says in there that the planning board investigated. It says the town, Mr. Harris, a major consulting, in his testimony, he deemed it. It's all in a different tense. You know, two days before, they actually held that mayor to see if it qualified, this council voted, and in their writing in their resolution, again, Mr. Attorney, I don't know if you read it. So my question against, how did two days in advance, did the council, and you as an attorney, know what the planning board was going to do?
It was the recommendation of what they were, that.
That's the language that they would send back to us.
That's right. It was the language in that resolution, which is the resolution that's being passed tonight, that was the recommendation to the planning board to review it, to whether or not to recommend it to the township. That's what that resolution says.
But the results were in the resolution. How did you know?
Only if they approved it, what the results were.
If they, if they approved it, which they did, because they, we knew this, when that resolution was proposed back on June 11th, we knew when the, when the meeting was going to be held on June 13th. So if they ultimately approved it, that's the resolution that we were asking them to review and decide whether or not to recommend to the township.
Look, after 50 years, I've seen enough of this. I never seen anything done that someone knew in the future, the council knew in the future, what the planning or zoning board was going to do.
No, they didn't approve it, and it wouldn't have been, it wouldn't have come back to us.
It wouldn't have come back, that's the resolution. Did you read the resolution that's being passed tonight?
Yeah.
Right.
It's the same thing.
Exactly, that's exactly right.
But that's, now tonight's correct, because they held a meeting, but in June 11th, you were voting for everything that they, you knew what they did already. What you got tonight is correct, but that's what you.
You don't understand, I'm sorry, Mr. Grant, Antoni, you don't understand how it works. The procedure is for this council to, when it comes to an area of need of rehabilitation, for this council to send a resolution, a proposed resolution, to the planning board, which is exactly what this mayor and council did. They sent that proposed resolution for consideration to the planning board.
Requesting.
Correct.
Right.
No, requesting that they review it to recommend or not recommend that particular resolution.
If they didn't recommend it, it would have never come back to us with that word again.
Correct. And they actually saw that resolution, they heard from the township engineer, and they concluded that the resolution that this council sent to them to review and determine whether or not they would recommend it to us, they did it, and they then said, okay, this is exact, we are required to send them the exact resolution that we are asking for them to make a recommendation on. The township council sent them the exact resolution that we, the township council believed was necessary, and they reviewed it, and it was accurate, and now they sent a letter that was read, that was referenced earlier by the township clerk, that they do recommend that the resolution that was sent to them be passed by this mayor and council, and that's what this mayor and council is doing.
Well, add it there, I'll bring your previous one, but what you're telling me now.
I have it right. I have it right in front of me.
All right. So in very short terms, what you're saying is, this council told the planning board to be a rubber stamp.
No, no, you're saying, you said...
Thank you. Sir?
I just have, as you know, my position on the thirty-year tax abatements, because I've been looking around online, and I've come across one that apparently you posted is called "The Real Deal," and these all, these are different. It's about, you're praising the mayor of Jersey City for all the programs that they had here. But what caught my eye here is, like I said, thirty years, I always said is too long, and five years is sufficient. This one here is fourteen-hundred-eight-four rental, hotel parking, retail space, and a project's developers secured in Jersey City. Five-year tax abatement.
Yes, after Jersey City handed out thirty-year projects for a long time, now they no longer need to do thirty years, they're down to five.
But that, that's what I'm saying.
Proving the fact that pilots work.
Five-year pilots are fine, twenty, forty-six, two...
After you build a whole bunch of projects at thirty years, you no longer have to do thirty years.
Yeah, but that's why they're running away, because you saw the impact they had on their educational system. And it's going to happen here in Belleville. Also, I also got your letter here. Let me just see what it says here. It says that two thousand residents out of nineteen thousand registered voted, voted for the bomb. But then again, I saw five council members here vote to give it thirty-year tax abatement. Why didn't you put that on a ballot? Why don't we let the people know the exact amortization that these developers are paying? I think if they saw that, they'd be shocked and pass, they'd pass out of their...
I think they would be shocked that we haven't done more of them.
No, no. Because they're only paying fifty percent. Instead of getting up, what, what is it?
You don't understand...
I don't have the numbers with me right now. But if you look at some of the numbers, they're only paying fifty percent. They're paying fifty percent. You know how many thirty-year abatements you've got, you have to give away?
That's not true.
Yes, it is. I'm, you know what? Let me call the financials, and I'm going to be back with the numbers. Why don't we do that?
You don't understand pilots at all.
I think that's a fair number. But you're going to blame the Board of Education because you're taking the money to the Board of Education. That's like saying to me, oh, this, these studio apartments, no, there's going to be no children. That's like telling me you have basement apartments, but no families living there with children. That's the same thing you're telling me.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah?
Closing a call to one of the local residents in Belleville. Number one, how come the tax bill hasn't now been finalized for the year yet?
We've, Mr. Iacono addressed that during his remarks. We're obligated to introduce the budget and then send it down to Trenton. Trenton is still reviewing the budget. As soon as they're done reviewing the budget, they give us the okay to adopt that budget. That's why we have to send estimated tax bills.
No, thank you. And then I have another property to my next door neighbor. She's working, like, you know, building stuff, you know, in the back. And I tell her that she cannot go through my property anymore. I got tired of her because a lot of garbage comes on my side, which already I have two flat tires. And I spoke to her son in a gentle way, I don't want to talk to her at all. And I told him, I said, I have two flat tires, all the junk comes on my side over here. I says, you got to pay for this. I don't want no more garbage from over here. And now I remove my car, you know, on the other side over the driveway, and let's see what happens. It cost me fifty dollars, two flat tires, you know, that I got in the driveway. It was the junk, the nails, and also all the business that they have at twenty-six Columbus Avenue, I gave off of my driveway. Then we've been having a lot of trouble on this. I don't know what to do anymore.
Okay.
Last night I was ready to call the cops and then they came out. Another time, it was completely blocked off of, you know, near the driveway, and my tenants wrote a note, and then put it in his car, said, let's give him a chance. We did it again. I didn't even know what else to do with this, with this garbage at twenty-six.
Okay.
I can't talk to her because we get two tires. She's very, very mean. I didn't see her son anymore. I knew, I want her to, it was two flat tires that I have, the nails came on her side. Any solution on this, or nothing you guys can do about it?
So let me just back you up. You don't have to wait two weeks for a council meeting. If you feel that either somebody's got debris or garbage, you can call either the construction code department or a health department, or, like you mentioned before, maybe our police department, if that, you know, you don't have to wait to, a town meeting to come.
You know.
But that said, we have our construction official here, our health officers here, we have your address.
Okay.
They can send somebody up to look, but it very well may be just a neighborly dispute.
All right. When she first started, I think it was the police, or one gentleman came out, and he says to me, I can't do anything, you have to go, you have to go, say, the code department.
The what department?
The code of the department.
Code of building. Okay.
I mean, why they have to go through, I have to go through all this problem?
I meant, I, that, I wish you didn't have to go through the problem, but if you do have a complaint, we need, we need to direct those complaints to the right departments.
Okay, which department?
Our, our construction official's here, I'm sure he already wrote down the address.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Twenty, what was the address again, ma'am?
It's twenty-six Columbus Avenue, then I am at twenty-four Columbus Avenue, we're right next door. The driveway is in between her and me.
It's a shared driveway.
So now I have restraining order, her says, no more. That's it. And she's not talking to me. I say, I don't care. So I'm with her son, the boyfriend, and about the, about those two flat tires that she gave me.
Right. Yeah, that you have to talk to her about. But we, we have the address, though. If there's anything property maintenance-wise that we can do, we'll, we'll try and do it.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I need to...
I want to address illegal parking. On Second Avenue, you have no parking since forty-six. No tickets are given out. They, they used to give tickets out, but no more. That's no problem. The other problem is, on fifty, forty-three, forty-five, Mount Pleasant Avenue, there's a basement apartment, it's illegal as far as I know.
Can you just, I'm sorry, can you give that address again?
They're collecting six hundred dollars a month rent, and they're not paying taxes on that, that parking.
Can you just give the address again, please, sir?
John, what's the address, John?
The address?
The address.
The address.
The address.
The address again. What address?
Forty-three, forty-five, Mount Pleasant Avenue. All right. And then on Greenwood Street, right near the town hall, the third parking lot has about four or five vehicles that are abandoned, two buses, a van, and two cars.
Thank you, Frank.
Check that out and see what is going there.
Sure. And again, I'm going to say the same thing, John. You, you can call those in. You know, I mean, we love having you here, but you can call those in, you don't have to wait two weeks for a council meeting. But I know that either Anthony or somebody's right, right? Yeah, we have the addresses right there. I'm sorry, Phyllis, just let me get them first.
Kaya Beach on Two Fourth Street, just want to thank you, Mayor, and the council, and the police for introducing some ordinance with the parking on Fourth Street. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Phyllis. Phyllis, Phyllis Francie Antoni, I'm, 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 first, I want to thank the fire chief for fixing that hydrant on Seattle Avenue, because that's been a long time that we've been complaining about that being turned over. And Chief Minakini, I read on Facebook, I think you were putting police officers on the school buses, just to intermingle with the kids.
They did that already, yeah?
Yes. I think that's great. And I hope you continue it next year. We went to a meeting up in West Caldwell, and one of our residents, Mike Perron, the historian of our town, was honored with a plaque. There were only four people from Belleville there. There was Tommy Brolom, Mary Higgins, my husband and I. I think it would have been nice if one of the council people was there to represent them, to represent them. At the, he got a nice plaque, there was a lot of people from different towns there, and they had even from Nutley, the mayor, Nutley was there to back his people. So, I mean, that was a great honor that he got, and it would have been nice if somebody was there.
I mentioned that in my mayor's report.
I know you did, but it'd be nice to honor him for something like that, because the man does a lot of work and knows a lot about Belleville. And as far as the noise ordinance, I agree with some of it, but this is graduation time. If they're having a graduation party, you can relax it a little bit.
Well, we did say that, Phyllis, we did. The, the party brought the joy.
They're kids. They're kids. You can't tell kids to be quiet constantly, they're going to make noise, and it's nice to hear kids. Thank you.
Also, Phyllis, I, I didn't hear you mention, but the illegal apartment flyer that you've been introducing before for years, for years, who's been there, you're welcome.
Good evening, Michael Sheldon, forty-seventh White Street. Two topics tonight. Firstly, I know it was an ordinance introduced tonight, but the proposed amendments revisions to the zoning ordinances. I hope, in particular, the four ward council persons take the time to carefully read the proposed changes. Some of these changes are potentially disastrous for the township. And I'm not even going to touch upon what's being proposed for Silver Lake. Councilwoman Berg, I'm sure, will bring this up at the appropriate time. But the RB zone, which is a two-family zone, part of the changes proposed would allow three-family houses now to not only be built in the RB zone, but to be built on undersized lots, lots that are only thirty-five hundred square feet. Now, you couldn't technically, legally, without variances, put a one-family home on an undersized lot that's small. But under these changes, you would be allowed to put a three-family home on a thirty-five hundred square foot lot, thirty-five by a hundred feet. As long as you had the parking, if you could somehow come up with a parking, this would go right through, you would be, be given your, your permits to start construction. Please make, make the effort to read. Another thing with the BG zone, the now-uniformed retail residential zone along the Washington Avenue corridor, what they're proposing to do is to no longer allow gas stations to be built, no drive-throughs along the BG zone. So that means automatically, businesses like Donald's, Wal, the Two Walgreens, Taco Bell, all the banks that have drive-throughs, they're now suddenly pre-existing non-conforming uses. If they ever want to make any changes to their businesses, they're going to have to go before the zoning board to seek appropriate variances. I don't understand the logic in trying to eliminate drive-throughs and banks and gas stations on Washington Avenue. This, this document needs careful attention. I know there may have been some changes to it since the planning board hearing two weeks ago, that's why tonight I'm going to be submitting an open request to Ms. Kavanaugh to get the updated document, whatever is being referred to in this ordinance that was introduced tonight. The other topic I want to briefly discuss tonight, Mr. Frantatoni spoke about the tax impact of the referendum on tax bills. He's both right and wrong at the same time. Before I say anything more, let me preface things by saying, I am not speaking on behalf of the Board of Education. I'm just talking tonight about some numerical information that is publicly available, but I think will shed light on the tax bills in regard to the referendum. To, September of two thousand eighteen, the Board of Education had to make its first payment on the referendum. That was only interest, and it paid seven hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. The second payment for the referendum, which the board made in March of this year, again, interest only, was eight hundred and fifty-one thousand, so it was a total of one point six million for the first two payments, interest only. However, this September, not only do we have an interest payment, but principal. And because of some complications between the town hall and the Board of Education, the total bill for the referendum due September of this year, hold on to your hats, is three million, three hundred seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred fifteen dollars. So almost four million dollars is due, or almost three and a half million dollars is due come this September. And then in March of next year, interest only, eight hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. So for our next academic year, from September through June of next year, the Board of Education will be paying almost four point two million dollars towards the referendum. The point I'm trying to make here is that the referendum surcharge in the tax bills is not a uniform number. It vacillates from year to year, especially during these first two years. So all of us who just got our third quarter tax bills, which showed, I think everyone saw, a market increase, this is probably the result of the fact that between this building and the Board of Education, we need three, almost three point four million dollars to make the referendum payment due in September. So again, Mr. Frantatoni is both right and wrong when he makes the argument about how the referendum was already built into last year's tax, tax bills, that there shouldn't be any additional charges. That's not entirely true. When you look at the details of the payment schedule for the referendum, during these first three years, there's a lot of vacillation. Once we get beyond year three, things sort of equilibrate, and it's a fairly constant three million dollars each and every year, all the way through the year twenty forty-two. But you have to be cognizant of the fact that there is a lot of variability during these first three years, and that's why the school tax portion of the bills may be showing some wild fluctuations from, from quarter to quarter.
Thank you, Phyllis. Anybody else?
I just have three questions, so I'll ask them. At the last meeting, I asked, I can give an update on my quad sewer repair, because it now has been a year, so...
I, I can't even hear you. I'm sorry, can you speak up?
It's been a year.
For sure.
Also, on the letter you sent out with the tax bill, last year, on the average assessed, I believe you said ninety-nine dollars. This, this year, you're estimating seventy-nine to ninety-nine. Is that on the new assessments or on the old assessments?
That was the new assessments, the budget that we sent down to Trenton.
Okay. And normally, July first, anything that's outstanding gets dropped.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that affect the three ordinances you introduced?
No, no, it's going to affect the one item on the table.
Just the one on the table?
Yes.
Okay.
Can we get an update on that, on that shore? Yeah. We'll get you that update, Mr. Pooch. Sir?
Scott Higgins, Maple Avenue, Belleville. I just wanted to say, as a mayor of Post One-O-Five, American Legion, I thought it was, we all did a good job to commemorate the seventy-fifth anniversary of D-Day, unless in two weeks. A lot of help from Jacqueline, and a big mistake fixed within one day. And it was a good event, and we all appreciate it. And hopefully our next event will be Fourth of July. I still haven't gotten anything from, from Jacqueline to find out what, what the veterans supposed to do, or the American Legion to do. And also, I'm sure we're going to have some for September eleventh. And we want to be involved in that. I just always want to keep our post in the loop. Anytime you need a old veteran, we fight. All right?
I'm sure you'll be reached out to, sure.
Thank you.
Ma'am?
Mary Higgins is breaking after you. I opened copies of all invoices and purchase orders of the vendors for the November tenth, twenty eighteen Belleville Veterans Five-K Run. I noticed that American Legion Post two ninety-nine was paid, and also the VAV, but the other two veterans organizations aren't listed here. They're supposed to be received of two hundred fifty dollars out of six thousand dollars donated.
So...
You know what happened to it?
Is that the totality of your comments?
I'm asking, did they receive the money? Because it's not listed here.
And I'm asking you, are you, don't your comments? I don't want to speak...
Yeah, no, I'm not done, I have another comment.
But you know how this works, you speak and they go along.
Okay, I have another comment, because I don't know that much about tax bills. Okay, the final bill's coming out in November, correct? Before November?
As soon as our budget, as soon as our budget is approved, then for that next board, we'll...
Okay. So I'm assuming everyone like us had a, you know, little increase in their tax bill. Does that money go into an interest-bearing account, and then it's adjusted back in November? I mean, what happens to all those hundreds of thousands of dollars? Does that go into an interest-bearing account?
You're talking about, I can't answer my question, the third quarter?
No, I'm talking about, we have to pay this tax bill... No, I'm talking about, we have to pay this tax bill in August, right?
Correct.
Okay. The itemized tax bill. Assuming that it's way over what we normally pay, then it's adjusted back in November. Does the difference go into an interest-bearing account?
I don't think, I don't think there's a difference. This is a great question for Mary, but I don't think there's a difference. We take the third quarter taxes that we receive. We pay our bills.
Right.
We pay our bills and that's how we operate on the day-to-day operations. So, you know, one of the reasons why we wanted to make sure we meet our.
Okay, let me just, let me, okay. Just suppose we have to pay three thousand dollars more in August, all right? And then the new tax bill in November, hopefully, is like fifteen hundred less.
Oh, I see.
So what happened? Yeah.
I, I think I understand. So estimated tax bills went out, that coupon, that coupon said you owe X.
Right.
When we adopt our budget, if lightning strikes and that budget is less than what we thought, what happens to the difference? Are the taxpayers entitled to their money back with interest or not? I got it?
Yes.
I got it?
Yes.
Mary's a perfect person to answer that question. Mary?
You don't know?
I'm truly disagreeing with you.
I've never seen the fourth quarter go down that kind of a difference. So you've never seen the fourth quarter go down? Not like from the third quarter since I did the tax collector. It's always, it's always gone up slightly. I have not seen it ever to move down. The estimated bill from the fourth quarter.
Okay, so the estimated bill.
What happens is if the tax rate comes in, what the tax rate, if that comes in low, that's where you see the adjustment in the bill.
It's reduced.
So that's what we're always hoping for, always hoping for.
It's reduced overall.
It's reduced accordingly.
It's reduced. It's reduced. What was the adjustment?
The adjustment would be a little bit.
If you overpaid if you overpaid for it.
Thank you. Okay.
I hope they answered that question.
He didn't, but thank you for trying.
I always try.
I'd also like to know regarding the Five-K veterans, they were, there's supposed to have been a scholarship given to a relative of a veteran. Was that given out?
Yes.
Do we know how much is due?
Two hundred.
None of the veterans were informed of it.
That's not true. It was two hundred and fifty dollars. It was handed out a week or two ago at a large assembly that took place at the high school. And one of our commanders, I believe, was on hand.
Rich, Rich, Rich Brugia was there.
And Councilman Bell handed it out. So as promised, every single veterans organization got some kind of money, which had never been done before. Two hundred and fifty dollars each, although we gave out more. And we did give out a scholarship.
Right, that was never done before. Also, the eight hundred dollars to a disc jockey wasn't ever given out before either.
I don't believe it was eight hundred dollars paid to the judge.
Yes, well, yeah. You mentioned that and me, we have it on tape that at the Five-K run, that eight hundred dollars was given to a disc jockey that no one ever saw.
That's not true at all.
It's on tape. I'll bring you, I'll bring you the tape next time.
That's a category. You have it here, so don't you?
And then it's strange that I didn't receive the invoice for the disc.
Maybe because it doesn't exist.
I'll bring copy of the tape next time. You said that eight hundred dollars went to a disc jockey.
Well, just because you think I said it sometimes, it's just, I would, actually, I want to make a note right now and next meeting, I'll, I'll ask you if you forget.
Is that a joke?
No, I want to make a note now. And next week, since you accused me of doing that, I'll ask you to present the invoice.
I'll have it, I'll have it on tape. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Sir?
My name's Ted Strange. I'm not a resident of Bellevue. I address the Forty-third Prospect Hill Road, County Vector. Got some comments, but they're all local issues about external affairs. Is that okay?
Sure. You have five minutes there to, you could, you could talk about soccer.
I might skip soccer. The Women's World Cup is.
I, I'm following it.
Actually, I don't have good news. The title was genocided by a scholar. Because that's a title given by one of the investigators into forced organ harvesting in China. Their updated research concludes that China's hospitals transplant between sixty thousand and one hundred thousand vital human body organs each year. China's no real organ donation program. Here in the U.S., where the surgical organ transplant system is, patients wait two to three years just to match an organ to become available. In China, a weight and tons measure hits. An organ transplant, perusing to China, including one from Bellevue, can imagine the city date for their operation. But effectively, that means someone being dispatched on their behalf on that day. It's a cultural taboo to donate organs after death in China. So what's a source of organs? Translation of these hacks equates tens of thousands of prisoners' conscience each year being killed for the world. Most of these prisoners' conscience are common practitioners, but also Tibetans, Uyghurs, and past Christians. They're routinely blood tested and organs examined while held in China's forced labor camps, detention centers, and booked jails. So I have a quote, on June thirteenth, twenty sixteen, the U.S. House of Representatives unanimously passed Resolution Three four three, which in that summary section, quote, condemns the practice of state-sanctioned forced organ harvesting in China. Close quote. European Parliament has also passed similar resolutions. This has been happening for over ninety years. There's still a deadly silence on this issue. And that's why I come before you, the respective representatives of the community, to recognize the burden of this genocide as it marks violence. China's control of its own media are way beyond that. So it comes down to word now to the world to attack it. Many people take their services together, enormous numbers of people from China, from our country.
My apologies.
Now, we have one thousand hospitals in China.
That's why we need to.
Too many warnings. My apologies about that. It was a stupid thing.
Right.
So books are now being written and documentaries are being produced with more comprehensive information. So of all, I'm.
Thank you.
You can give it to them. Yeah, sure.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I donate a kidney, I have these hacks for you this year?
Yeah. If we need one, we'll lay it up.
Thank you so much. Anybody else? Motion?
Motion to close public.
Motion made second to close public comment and clerk color roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Mellen.
Absolutely.
Motion.
Consent?
Motion for consensus? Anything on vote?
Yes. Kelly, you ready?
I'm ready.
Six. Seven. Fourteen. Twenty-four and twenty-five.
Six, seven, fourteen. Twenty-four, twenty-five. Mayor?
You say so.
Okay.
So.
Who else?
The motion of move consensus, they have the signs there.
We have a motion made as second to move the whole consensus agenda. Would you get it? Clerk color roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Mellen.
Yes. Motion number six.
Motion to move number six.
Motion made second, clerk color roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli? DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Mellen.
Upstate.
The motion of seven?
Second.
Motion made second for resolution seven, clerk color roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Mellen.
Upstate.
Fourteen?
Fourteen.
Fourteen? Motion to move fourteen?
Second.
We have motion and made as second to move at fourteen. I just want to say we're, it's an honor for this council to always appoint and hire judges. And I've had many conversations with Mr. Angelo. He's worked here as. He's worked here as our prosecutor, chief prosecutor for a couple of years now. Mr. Angelo is a Bellevue boy, graduate of Bellevue High. And I'm honored to take part in his nomination and voting to make him our next chief judge. Anybody else?
Well, Joe and I started together, so it's been fifteen years for us, John. You were there here. Fifteen years.
Great guy and an honor to have. Let's have a move.
You have a motion?
We have a motion made as second already. Court.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Mellen.
Yes.
Motion move twenty-four?
Motion made as second move twenty-four. We are appointing a new deputy mayor, Captain Cosarelli. It's gonna be an honor to have you second in command up here.
No one voted on it yet.
Nope. Um, yeah, so.
Thank you. I'm honored just to be considered. And thank you for John for serving.
You got, you got big shoes to fill here, right?
Big John.
John did an excellent job.
All right, let's do it.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Mellen.
Yes. Motion twenty-five.
Make a motion move twenty-five?